PM. Charlie, can you please do the real call?
Yes, uh, let's see. Oh, there's Commissioner Dram, right on time. I'll wait for him to connect his audio. Commissioner Dram, are you here? Thank you. Commissioner Gitsoni?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Wax?
Here.
We are expecting Vice Chair Simons shortly and Chair Chaff.
Here.
And we do have one vacancy on the commission, as you know. So we currently have, uh, five commissioners present, which is a quorum, and we're expecting one more.
Okay, great. So let's move on to agenda item number three, resolution declaring the need for the Planning Commission to continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. Um, Charlie, can you please read the introductory remarks section?
Yes, thank you. I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to California Assembly Bill 361. The city was previously complying with the Brown Act orders issued by the governor, which were aimed at containing the novel coronavirus and which expired on September 30th, 2021. AB 361 gives local agencies the authority to continue to host virtual meetings until January 1st, 2024, as long as California is still under a governor declared state of emergency. In order to continue meeting subject to this exemption to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission must make findings by majority vote no later than 30 days after it starts using the exemption and every 30 days thereafter. And will do so at this meeting and until the governor lifts the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular business hours, which are 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, closed from, uh, 12 to 1:00, I would note. The planning and building counter has different hours, so please check or make an appointment before visiting. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and may view this meeting, oh, sorry, and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville Planning Commission webpage and clicking on the link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine on your phone. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda and will be, as well as via email notification and on social media. So at this time, Chair Chaff, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the resolution, uh, which contains the required AB 361 findings.
Great, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second. All right, that motion was Commissioner Gitsoni and seconded by, was that Commissioner Wax that made the second? Okay, thank you. Right, on the motion, Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitsoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
I think he just dropped and is rejoining.
Oh. Vice Chair Simons, would you like to vote on the resolution, AB 361 resolution?
Uh, yes, I'd like to vote aye, sorry.
Thank you. And Chair Chaff?
Aye.
Six ayes, the motion is approved, thank you.
Okay, and maybe we'll just mention that, um, we are expecting to meet on Zoom next month in February as well, um, and then in person, uh, for our March meeting.
That is correct.
Great. Okay, so now we will move on to item number four, public comment. And, um, we will take public comment on matters within our purview that are not on tonight's agenda, um, for three minutes or less. And I think I'll mention here, just to emphasize that item number 9.2, which was Nine Ingrah Drive, will not be heard tonight because the project was withdrawn. Um, okay, uh, Charlie, could you please read the general public comments part of the script?
Certainly. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on this agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine on your phone. And at this time, I'll check to see if any online speaker cards have been received. I did receive one earlier today. I have not received any more at this time. And we also have a raised hand among the attendees. Both the raised hand and the speaker card are from Fran Quatell, who has also provided me with a picture that she would like you to see. So, uh, I'm gonna unmute Fran, and while she's talking, I will bring up the picture that she wanted to, uh, talk about. So, let's see.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Hi, I don't think I've met the, um, commissioners in person, but I'm a well-known commodity in the city, as Charlie will let you know. I have served on the Budget Advisory Committee for a long time. I live at Watergate. And, um, I hope, can you see the photograph that I provided, Charlie?
I'm, I'm bringing it up now.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Now I have to share my screen, hang on. Sorry. All right, there we go.
Okay.
Can you all see that?
Okay, thank you. All right. That photograph probably dates from about 1963, give or take 20 years. Uh, it's the Emeryville Peninsula. I thought you might enjoy looking at it. Given the recent attention to Anchor Drive, I thought I might reiterate to the Planning Commission a proposal I made to our City Council on July 20th, 2021. That was after the Surfside Florida collapse, and it regards establishing an older building accountability program in our city. In that request, I brought older housing stock to the attention of City Council and requested that every 10 to 15 years, the city conduct an analysis of older complexes and buildings and the land they are on with regard to significant components. Landfill, geologic stability, balcony, safety, there is a state ordinance that'll go into effect in 2025, and whether the waterproofing was up to date, among other major components. At that time, the response was, it's a very nice idea, but we don't have the funds or personnel to do this. I think members of the Planning Commission might, if they haven't already, take a walk on Commodore Drive and more importantly, on Admiral Drive, that's one street below, uh, before, uh, Anchor Drive. Admiral Drive is built on top of a mud-filled ravine, sometimes referred to as a river, to the, to recognize the legitimacy of my request. Given that pile driving for new construction might destabilize existing buildings, driveway, and an entire neighboring community, noting that new construction on fragile landfill is what is, what contributed to Surfside's coastal collapse, I think that this analysis should be a mandated part of your work before even thinking about new construction, especially when that new construction would take place right next to fragile places that currently house thousands of people. Thank you for listening to my requests and also for serving. That's it.
Thank you very much, Fran, for taking the time to join us and for your comments. Charlie, any other raised hands or speaker cards?
Um, let me see. I don't see any other raised hands among the attendees. Let me double-check my email. I do not have any further speaker cards.
Okay, great. Then we will close the public comment period for this meeting and move on to agenda number five, agenda item number five, approval of the action minutes from December 8th, 2022. Um, do any commissioners have comments on the minutes? Okay, I don't see any hands. Um, so would anyone like to make a motion on the minutes?
Maybe we need a motion.
Second by Rod Henry.
All right, so the motion was by Commissioner Dram and seconded by Commissioner Henry. All right, on approval of the minute, um, Commissioner Dram. Commissioner Dram, you're on mute.
Aye.
Commissioner Gitsoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Chair Chaff?
Aye.
Six ayes, the minutes are approved, thank you.
Great, okay, we'll move on to item number six, Community Development Directors Report. Over to you, Charlie.
Thank you, Chair Chaff. Uh, first, with regard to recent City Council actions, the council has met, uh, three times. Your last meeting was on December 8th, and they've met three times since then. Uh, those meetings were on December 12th, December 20th, and January 17th. At the December 12th meeting, the council approved an amendment to the staffing summary of the fiscal year 2223 operating budget to add a code enforcement officer to the Building Division to be funded by Measure F, which is the quarter cent sales tax that was approved by the voters in March of 2020. The council unanimously approved, uh, voted to adopt the 2023-2031 housing element of the general plan and approved it for submission to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for certification. And as a part of that action, the council also approved an addendum to the general plan EIR to cover the new housing element. Uh, the adopted housing element was submitted to HCD for certification last Friday. The council certified the, uh, results of the November 8th election, including passage of Measure O, which modifies the city's real estate transfer tax, and the election of Kalima Pryforce and David Mora to the City Council. Council members Donahue and Martinez were presented with proclamations of recognition and made leaving office remarks. Council members Pryforce and Mora were then sworn in. John Bouders was elected for a second term as mayor, and Courtney Welch was elected as vice mayor for 2023, and both were sworn in. And the council, the council appointed themselves to various city council committees and as representatives to various county, regional, and statewide boards, commissions, and committees for calendar year 2023. On December 20th, the council made appointments of Emeryville citizens to various advisory committees that currently have vacancies, including the Economic Development Advisory Committee and the Public Art Committee, which are both staffed by the Community Development Department. The council passed a resolution determining that the public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance of a liquor license to Price Fighter Bottle Shop at 132067 Street, as the council will recall, uh, commission will recall, sorry. You approved a major conditional use permit for this use on December 8th. The city council determination is required by the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control in order to issue a liquor license. Um, the council was to have considered a request for a waiver from the Noise Ordinance to Biomed Realty for early morning work on all Mondays between January and May at Garage Building 14 of the Biomed project at 4555 Porton Street. However, prior to the meeting, the applicant withdrew the request due to neighbor opposition and staff's recommendation to deny the request. Members of the public who attended the meeting were still allowed to speak on the item. Uh, and in anticipation of the governor's announced February 28th lifting of the state of emergency related to the COVID pandemic, the council discussed options for returning to in-person meetings. It was decided that the City Council would return to in-person meetings in February with a hybrid option for the public to participate remotely, while City Council committees, citizen advisory committees, and the Planning Commission would continue to meet remotely until March, as Chair Chaff has just noted. Finally, Councilmember Medina dropped a little bit of a bombshell when she announced that she was resigning from the City Council effective on January 15th. At the January 17th council meeting, they held a study session on the Active Transportation Plan, praising staffs and the consultants' efforts and asking how this plan differs from similar efforts in Oakland and Berkeley. They also suggested that public comments be grouped into themes so that major and recurring comments could be synthesized and responded to, uh, but with links to specific comments. The council also held a study session on the 5850 Schelmont Project, which includes, as you know, a research and development tower with 30 affordable housing units. The council supported this proposed mix of uses, and they asked that the developer consider increasing the number of units by adding a few accessory dwelling units or ADUs, as has been suggested by the Planning Commission. Um, also on January 17th, the new city manager, Paul Buttonhagen, was sworn into office. And, uh, the council presented a proclamation of appreciation to former council member Ally Medina and discussed how to fill the vacancy created by her resignation. They decided to appoint a replacement rather than wait almost a year for an election in November. Applications for the open seat will be posted on the city website tomorrow, that's January 27th. And the application period will be open through February 10th. The council will make the appointment by the middle of March, and the new council member's term will then run through December 2024, which is when Councilmember Medina's term would have expired. And concerning the Planning Commission vacancy created by Commissioner Moore's election to the council, the city clerk announced that the next round of recruitment for city boards, commissions, and committees, including the Planning Commission, will open on February 17th, with applications due by April 3rd, and appointments to be made by the City Council on April 18th. So hopefully, we will have a new commissioner for your April 27th meeting. And in other news, I want to note that our new assistant planner, Alyssa Chung, began work last week. We're thrilled to have her on board and to have the Planning Division fully staffed again. Uh, unfortunately, Alyssa could not make tonight's meeting, but you will certainly see her at future commission meetings. And she will be having items on the agenda, uh, some upcoming meetings soon. Uh, finally, I just want to note that Chair Chaff has informed me that she will be absent from your next meeting in February, so Vice Chair Simons will preside over the meeting. That will be our last meeting via Zoom, and we will be back in the City Council chambers in person in March, which I knew, I know will be a new experience for everybody but me, so that should be interesting. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thanks so much, Charlie, and yes, definitely a new experience. Um, are there any questions for Charlie? Okay, seeing no questions, um, let's move on to item number seven, which is disclosure of expedited communications and conflicts of interest. Does anyone have anything to mention? No, okay, so I have one thing, which is that I'll need to recuse from item 8.1 because I own my home in proximity, I think it's within 1,000 feet of the project site. And it looks like that's the only, uh, disclosure tonight. Okay, so we can then move on to item 8.1. Um, so Charlie, go ahead and kick me off.
All right, I will remove Chair Chaff to the attendee group, and, uh, Vice Chair Simons will preside over this portion of the meeting. Let's see. How do I do that? Oh, here we go, hang on, sorry. Sorry, I'm having a little problem figuring out how to move Chair Chaff to the, to the attendee list. Not working. Well, why don't you go ahead, Vice Chair Simons?
Thanks, Charlie. Okay, so let's start, um, with the staff report for item 8.1, 65th Street, multifamily residential extension.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Simons, with your new commission. Uh, I will start to share my screen here. There we go. Are you seeing it all right? Yes.
Looking good.
Okay, great, excellent. So I'll be making a short presentation on this, uh, item tonight, and I'll be available for questions afterwards, as is the applicant. So, uh, 1225 65th Street, uh, here is the location, uh, between 65th Street and Peabody Lane, just east of the Greenway. Here's what it looks like today, and here's the project that was approved, uh, about a year ago by the Planning Commission on December 9th, 2021. This project includes 15 two-bedroom units and nine three-bedroom units, 24 residential, 24 unit residential project. Uh, and, um, oops, that wasn't supposed to be in there, but here we go. So the, tonight, uh, the applicant has requested an extension of their permit. So, what's in the conditions of approval, which reflects the planning regulations, that is if no building permits filed and fees aren't paid, uh, in accordance with building permit regulations within one year, then the planning permit expires, unless you apply for an extension to the Planning Commission, which you do by writing a, a letter to, uh, the Planning Division and requesting an extension, which the applicant has done. So the maximum total time you can get for extensions is three years, including the initial, um, one year. So tonight, they're requesting a two-year extension. So if granted, this will expire on December 9th, 2024, um, which will give the applicant a little bit of wiggle room in order to be able to get this project completed. So the reason for the request is that, uh, the project architect has not been able to secure the needed consultants for the work because of the pandemic, um, shortage, which will persist. And while they've been diligently working on the plant supply for the building permit, it's becoming difficult to be able to have enough plan materials meant for the building permit before the deadline. So they are requesting an extension. There are several findings that need to be made tonight, uh, by the Planning Commission, and staff believes that the findings can be made. One is that the permit holder has clearly documented that it has made a good faith effort to commence work upon use. And staff believes that these concerns legitimate. Many services, including those related to building and architecture, continue to be impacted by COVID-19 pandemic, and there, um, are certainly shortages going along of people being available to work on, uh, projects, especially specialists. The second is that it's in the best interest of the city to extend the permit. So there is a housing crisis in the Bay Area, and it's in the city's interest to extend entitlements another two years to try and make sure that these units that have been approved and worked on by the city are, um, able to move forward and actually be created. The 24 residential units also contribute to the city's regional housing needs allocation for the housing element. Third is that there's no substantial changes to the project, um, that impact CEQA. So there haven't been any changes to the project, um, or any changes to CEQA that would be different if the project was approved today. And the Planning Commission found the project to be exempt under, um, 15332 and 15061B3. And fourth, that the permit holder is maintaining the property in compliance with all applicable city regulations. There have been no changes in the property, and it's being maintained in accordance, as far as the city is aware. So staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the two-year extension with a new expiration date of December 9th, 2024. And as I said before, I'm available for questions, as is the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Norar. Do we have a presentation from the applicant, or is, are they just here for questions?
I don't believe we do. I think they're just here for questions.
Correct, that's correct.
Um, do any planning commissioners have any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Dram, go for it.
Uh, first question is like, is the city able to help the applicant with the list of consultants that can help the project to move forward, or is something out of our, um, you know?
Yeah, the city does not, um, advise or provide lists of people. Um, I think it's just a general concern now, like, there's many projects that have been slowed down and impacted just by needing, you know, particular types of engineers or whatever for a project, and it taking longer than usual to secure those, um, specialists.
Okay, and my second question is, the fee that we put was for last year. Are we adjusting the, uh, city fees, or is it gonna be remiss?
Um, I think Charlie can verify that, that the fees are, uh, current from when they're actually paid.
Are, are you speaking about the fee, the fee chart that is attached to the, uh, uh, to the conditions of approval?
I'm taking out the permanent fees?
Yes, yes, they will be, uh, th- those were the ones that were in effect at the time of, uh, the, the project approval in 2021, but I, I believe that's a good point. Um, there should be a note on that chart that indicates that the fees will be whatever they are when the building permit is issued, because they do change every year. And, uh, there, it's just our best faith effort to give them a, a reading on the current fees when they get their approval, with the understanding that they will be, they will go, it will be different when they pull their building permit.
Thanks so much.
And I believe, uh, Commissioner Henry had a question, Vice Chair Simons?
Thanks so much, Commissioner Henry.
Yes, um, so, uh, my question is about, uh, the good faith effort and the documentation that you mentioned was provided. Can you tell us what, what was provided?
Yes, only the letter was provided. Um, we didn't request further documentation. One, I wasn't really sure, uh, what specifically to ask, and two, it's just generally accepted right now that that is true, like, it's
Okay.
not a unique circumstance right now at all.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, do any other commissioners have questions? No, got it. Um, well, I guess I just, I have a question. So my sense is, like, you know, we've heard from numerous other applicants that no residential projects are allowed in the Bay Area right now. Um, and I imagine there are no office projects happening in the Bay Area with our lot of commercial office space. So I would imagine there's lots of consultants who actually have a lot of spare time on their hands. Um, so I'm quite skeptical, um, of this reason. My guess is largely that the interest rates have gone up significantly, uh, which is obviously a huge bummer for all of us. Um, I don't think, if this is how we have to extend the, extend the permit, whatever, fine. Um, but it doesn't really align with the numerous economic facts, which I think the commission has learned over the past couple of years of meeting with many different applicants. So do you have any thoughts about that, Norar?
And the applicant is here to
Or, yeah, the applicant would like to address that too, that would be great. Yeah.
Would you, you'd like to hear from the applicant?
Sure, yeah, that would be great, yeah. Because if there are, you know, types of consultants that we need to, like, tweet about, or, you know, call up on the phone and say, hey, come and work in Emeryville, like, we should know that, that would be great to hear.
All right, I've asked the applicant to unmute.
Hello?
Mr. Dram?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Moshe Dinar, I'm the architect and also the applicant. Uh, the owner is also, uh, listening in. Um, but, uh, the only thing that I, I, I have to say about the, um, the requirement for this extension is it, it was, it's, it's, it's COVID, which is a problem, because we've had awesome people who have had to stay home, uh, for periods of time, but also we've had consultants that were extremely busy. Uh, in general, the profession, architecture, engineering, of all types, is extremely busy. People are very, very busy. There is a lot of housing construction going on, and I know that there are conversations about, you know, s- some things may be slowing down, but, but for us, we've been very busy, and, uh, this, uh, lack of support has, has really created a problem for us. So we are not a very large firm, and we are not the kind that can just financially grow by adding 20 people, spending a fortune, and then losing our shirt and closing our doors. What we have to do is add as many people as we possibly can within the budget of the project. Typically, housing projects are limited in budget, and we try to do the best job that we can. We spent, uh, a number of years sometimes going through approval process, and by the time you get to the approval process, everything has changed. Construction costs, materials costs, availability of things, so the availability of insurance, all of those things contribute to delays, and, uh, that is, uh, not the reason, make, all those reasons, we didn't provide a whole litany of reasons. We simply provided the, the most important one, which is the availability of labor force and the availability of consultants. I, I appreciate your concern about the, the actual statement, but I believe it's a very, very true statement, and I think you'll find that true among other professionals. Thank you very much, and again, I want to thank the City of Emeryville for approving our project and supporting us all along. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Does any, do any other commissioners have any comments about this project, or would anybody like to make a motion?
Well, uh, Vice Chair Simons, you need to, you need to hold the public hearing first.
Oh, got it, sorry. Let's open up the public hearing if there are any comments from the public.
Okay, let me check my, uh, email to see if I got any last-minute online speaker cards on this item. I did not. I likewise do not see any raised hands among the attendees. So at this time, it would be appropriate for you to close the public hearing.
Got it. Well, I will close the public hearing then. Um, and do we take commissioners' comments now?
Now you can make, yeah, yeah, you can deliberate and/or make a motion.
If anybody would like to deliberate and/or make a motion, I am all here.
Motion.
Commissioner Dram, please.
Yes, I gotta make motion on item 8.1 for extending the, uh, application permit?
As recommended, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Would anybody like to second that?
I'd second that.
All right, on the motion by Commissioner Dram and seconded by Commissioner Wax. Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henme?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Chair Chaffis recused, so that is five ayes. The motion is approved. The application is extended for two years. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within fifteen days. And now, thank you. Now I will bring Chair Chaff back. Thank you, Vice Chair Simons.
Hello. All right, now we will proceed with item nine point one, which is a study session about the capital improvement program. So could we please have the staff's presentation? I think Josie is this from you.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Josie Arons, and I'm a management analyst in Public Works, and I'm here tonight to share about our capital improvement program. And there's also, this information is available online, and if you have more questions later, you can look it up on our website, emeryville.org/cip. Just a quick overview of the agenda. I'll give a high level overview of what the capital improvement program is, including a timeline. And then I will dive into explaining different pieces of the foundation of the CIP. And that will include source documents, values and categories. And we'll end with some time for public input, including hearing your comments, thoughts and questions. So a quick overview, the capital improvement program is a five-year plan that helps guide Emeryville's investment in our public buildings, parks, streets, sewers and other city facilities. And as city staff, we use this as a roadmap or as like a high level work plan to design, construct and repair city facilities. And this is really to advance our overall goals of a livable and sustainable Emeryville. So the kind of projects that are included in the CIP are large scale, long-term investments that build, replace and improve public infrastructure. I included a picture here of the Greenway because that is a massive capital project that did all three of those things. In comparison, maintenance projects are small, short-term repairs. And those are the sorts of things that can be requested through C Click Fix. And another way that I like to think about this is the difference between potholes and full street repaving. So if you come across a pothole, it's, you know, something that you want to be addressed right away, but it's a small, short-term repair, and that's something that you can report through C Click Fix. Whereas full street repaving, either the grinding and milling or doing a slurry seal, that kind of larger investment, full street repaving is going to be a capital project. So it's kind of the difference between maintenance and capital projects. Here is our timeline, starting in last October, where we presented a study session at council about this process. In November, I facilitated conversations with city staff in multiple departments to hear about their needs and priorities. In December, we did a little bit of public outreach in social media and also physical flyers to let the public know that January, this time is the time for public input. Here we are in January. I'm visiting the planning commission as well as many different community advisory commissions and city council committees. And we also have a form up online where members of the public can submit ideas for projects electronically. And in February and March, we'll be pulling together a draft list of projects and we'll let that out into the world via a public feedback survey. And at that point, we're really looking for constituents, visitors, businesses, folks who care about Emeryville to give input on priorities of different projects and we'll have folks rank projects in that survey. Then in April, I'll do a study session at Budget Commission. And in May, I will come back to you all again, seeking your approval of conformity with the general plan for the CIP. And I'll present again at City Council in one final study session. And throughout the spring, staff and public works will be working closely with staff and finance to develop our budget analysis and weigh our budget constraints and get really clear on what money we have available and what money we don't have available. And in June, hopefully the CIP will be brought to City Council for adoption alongside the city's new operating budget. And then we'll be ready to go, starting in July with the new fiscal year. So now diving in into the foundation, I'll share a little bit more about each of these blue boxes in a minute. But want to say that our draft project list begins with our previous CIP list. In the staff report, you may have read that our prior CIP, which was last passed in twenty nineteen, included eighty-five projects, budgeted at ninety-one million dollars. So we take that list, so we look at what we've accomplished, what's in process, what we haven't started. And with city staff, council and public input is how we're going to get to that draft project list. And then to get from the draft project list to the final project list, we'll review council priorities. And then that budget constraints piece, again, that I mentioned, is just looking at what money we have available. So this is our list of source documents. The goal of the CIP is not to reinvent the wheel. Our staff have done throughout the last decade plus many different plans and have documents that list projects and priorities. So the goal of the CIP is to pull all of those different lists and projects and just bring them all together into the capital improvement program. I'm not going to talk about each of these. There's a lot of information, but listing them here so that you're aware of the different plans that we're pulling in as source documents. A few of these are still in draft form, as you have heard about the active transportation plan that will hopefully be adopted this spring, and many of the projects in that plan are going to be pulled directly into the capital improvement program. These are our values. The, these values come from conversations with city staff as well as from the source documents listed on the prior slide. We'll be using these values as ways to tag projects in the plan. And we wanted to create these values, this list, to be able to make our values more clear and more legible to members of the public as well as to staff. So these include climate action, connectivity, equity, maintenance, quality of life, which is kind of a broad category. So we're adding in sort of mini sub-values of art and innovation, and then safety. And the last sort of foundational piece of the CIP are our categories. The prior CIP had eleven categories that were sort of illegible. It didn't really make sense. There were similar projects in different categories. So this time around, we're trying to simplify into six different buckets. These include urban greening, and so that would have all of our street trees as well as our perks projects. Essential infrastructure is our bridges, stormwater, sewer. Basically, yeah, the things that you really need to be working. Sustainable transportation is a very large category. This includes all of our signals work and paving, our pedestrian and bike and transit projects. Housing is a category that includes funding set aside, the city sets aside for affordable housing. So even if we ourselves, the city is not building the physical building, we want to make sure that we're sharing it as a priority to dedicate funding to those buildings. And that those will, that's what you'll see in that category. Community facilities is all of our sort of buildings, so City Hall, the senior center and buildings out at the marina as well. And community facilities also includes our public art programs. And then information technology is what it sounds like. These are all the IT things we need to keep the city running, so that includes our hardware, all of our computers and other devices, as well as the software that we use. And so with that, I presentation and I look forward to place or improve.
Great, thank you so much, Josie. That was really helpful. And now I would like to ask if there are any clarifying questions from commissioners. Commissioner Simmons, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair. How does like, you know, fiscal responsibility and thriftiness fit in here? And how, you know, are the money that's going to find each of these projects separate enough that it's, this is IT money or this is sustainable transportation money, so we don't need to worry about making sure we're paying for the most important things first because the money kind of flows where it flows? And how are we making sure we spend our limited money as judiciously as possible?
Thank you. Yeah, I think some of those probably could be answered better by our finance staff. To your last point about how we can spend our money as efficiently as possible, I think that that will come down from our council priorities, you know, informed by commissions and community advisory boards and constituents. Then the council will sort of have the final say about this is what our priorities are we want to be spending our money on. I think, you know, staff, we're always looking how to how we can get the most out of the limited budget that we have. Even though Emeryville is well-resourced in lots of ways, we definitely do not have enough funds to do all the things that we want. Some of these projects are going to be mandated. So some of the sewer and the stormwater things, we just absolutely have to get done. Other things which may be more discretionary could be things that don't float to the top of our priority list. But that's going to have to really be informed by, like I said, that survey in February and March, and then as we bring things back to council, just to see what their priorities are. So I wish I had an easy answer, or I could say these are the numbers that we have about how much money is in the bucket. But right now, we're still just collecting ideas on projects and we'll continue to do the budget constraint piece throughout the next few months. Hopefully that answered your questions.
Okay, great. We'll move on to Commissioner Henme. Go ahead.
Yes. So you know, CIP and infrastructure and under the work, under the aegis of DPW, I can you often, I think of it as city infrastructure. The IT part is the part that confuses me a bit in that that's more equipment and and so I'm wondering what's included in the IT. For example, is software included? And why wouldn't and are computers and equipment like that included? And why, if so, why wouldn't that be included in a different pot of money? And I can understand, for example, if you're running cable, that that would be included. But I, could you, can you, so can you clarify what's included in IT?
Thank you. I have actually had a similar question. So you are not alone in asking that one. I'm looking at the list of projects from last time and some of this is our record management system, which we, the city clerk's office uses to keep track of, actually uses for all of our contracts, ordinances, those sorts of things. Computer-aided dispatch, which our police department uses, and then our geographic information system, which our planning and public works departments use. So I think that the IT has been included in the capital program, a sort of a legacy feature. I can see it also living maybe under our operating budget. But for right now, I think it's stayed in the CIP because it is an important piece of how we get things done, even though it's very much behind the scenes and isn't always top of mind, even for staff. But I know when, when I can't get access to one of our systems, it really slows things down. So, yeah, is it a good question? Maybe in future CIPs, staff will decide that, you know, we shouldn't be including this. But but for now, it's, it has stayed in.
If I could just chime in, I think, you know, we do have a category of city facilities, or I forget the title, community facilities, which is like City Hall and the senior center and so forth, as Josie said. And an important part of those facilities is their computer equipment. And I think this, the idea here is just to kind of segregate that out as a separate category or a separate thing in the CIP. But you could think of it as just part of the overall city, city infrastructure of the city, how we get stuff done.
I'll also quickly add, I know we do have one new IT project, which is going to be updating our facilities in City Hall to be able to host hybrid meetings, both for like, you know, the city council itself, as well as the planning commission and then community advisory board. So that that is a new project that you will see under IT.
Great, thank you. I'll move on to Commissioner Dram. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question about the, a little explanation how the affordable housing component works. Can you explain it, please? Be a for affordable housing.
Yeah, so Charlie might be able to share more about this and has prior experience. I'll say that, like, the city of San Francisco includes housing in their CIP, but the city of Oakland doesn't. And so I think there's not really a standard way to do it. We are including it here, I think, as a way to talk about how we will be applying our affordable housing bond and expenditure plan, how we're going to be putting that into action. And that housing is, and housing is a long-term investment that the city is putting funding to and is a policy priority as well. And so using the CIP as sort of a high-level work plan or roadmap allows the public to be able to understand how we allocate staff time and to say that this is a priority. This is the amount of bonds or this is the amount of state funding we're going to be funneling into these different projects. Housing in the last CIP had, looking at it now, had seven different affordable housing sites listed. And so it's a way to give the public a little bit of information into what those different projects are. And I'll pass it to Charlie to add.
Thank you. I think that was a really good summary. I don't have a lot to add. I just wanted to say, and actually, this is sort of to the previous question about the general, the general question about funding. If you've ever looked at the city's budget document, which is, you know, a cure for insomnia, but it does have a section on capital projects. And it's, it's got the city's various pots of money kind of sliced and diced in various different ways. But there is a table in there that lists all the capital projects and then all of the various funds that the city has. And it, so you can see for each fund, which different capital projects is that fund, you know, funding. And then looking the other way, for each capital project, you can see what funds are funding that project and how much from each of the various funds. So the housing, you know, it's just an important tool for us to keep track of which funding source is being used for all of these different housing projects, because there are a number of different affordable housing buckets in the city, and this just helps us keep track of all of them and the timing of the expenditures on each housing project.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands right now, so I'll take a turn. I was hoping that you could talk a little bit about the equity value, like what, what is, what do the values mean exactly? Like, how do they come into the process? And and how is the equity one defined?
Yeah, great question. So the the values, we came up with the list again from looking at prior plans and and other documents and then having those conversations with city staff in the fall. The equity one is one that we're still working on defining. I mean, because equity can mean lots of different things. Are you talking about, you know, geographic equity, looking at different parts of the city? Are you talking about different identities and demographics? There's lots of different ways to cut it. Are you looking at, you know, equity across buckets of funding, making sure that different projects like have making sure that different projects like have parity in the funding? I think that the way that we are thinking about it is looking at how other agencies have defined equity and the way that we apply that in our housing work. I'm trying to remember. It may not, may, I will get you the definition that we've been looking at, and I apologize that I don't have it right now. But it's related to, from HCD at the state level, how they look at high resource or high opportunity areas. And there is enough distinction within Emeryville of those different areas to be able to use it in more of a geographic sense. And I apologize that I don't have the definition on me right now.
That's helpful already. I guess, and then to the question about process, like, does, will equity be used to prioritize certain projects? Like, if they were associated with an equity tag, meaning that they address equity or address inequities, promote equity, would that help them rise up in the rankings of the projects as the budgeting is happening? Or is it more of just a tag and you're going to choose a number of projects that have that tag associated at the end, or something else?
Yeah, it will come down to, I think, council priorities. I anticipate that the council would want to elevate projects that are tagged with an equity value. But in available buckets of funding, we might have to prioritize projects that are mandated through state law or other requirements to make sure that pieces of our infrastructure are in compliance. And so there may be a project that is located in a high opportunity area, which may not fall under the equity tag, but we might need to get done, and we might need to be spending money on it, and that might get elevated over another project. And so it's a little in flux right now in terms of how we're going to apply it. It's a great question. This is the first time we're using values to tag projects. And we'll have to see a little bit about how it plays out in prioritizing with also weighing other factors that we, that we need to weigh.
Great, thanks. And then while I'm talking, I had a question about future park projects, so like new park development. And right now, the brief description that I see on Table 1 in the staff report about urban greeting says, "This category includes projects to rehabilitate and maintain city parks, as well as improve the appearance of city streets with landscaping and street trees." I didn't see anything in that category, at least about expanding park area or any sort of possibility of new park facilities. Is that, is it in another category? Is it that we don't anticipate doing any of that? I know there are various community members that have pointed out that we're very behind on our park progress in terms of like acres per resident. So just curious about that one.
Yes, that's definitely something we've heard is a priority from community members. I'll say that there's a high likelihood that we will have a study in the capital improvement program about park needs and park space. At this point, there isn't enough of a full-fledged project about additional park space that we can sort of slot in. The capital improvement program does include studies of future capital infrastructure, and this will probably fall into one of those studies. Any sort of new park space is going to need a very robust community engagement process, and we don't have the capacity, looking at a citywide plan of all different types of infrastructure, to lead and really give the space and resources that that study would deserve in these like nine months for the capital improvement program process. So I'll say, yeah, I'll pass it to Charlie.
Thanks, Josie. I just want to note, Chair Chafe, that we do have, and I believe it's listed as one of the source documents for the CIP, the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. Now, that was done a number of years ago, so it might be time to update that plan. But the plan does identify potential new parks throughout the city. And, you know, for various reasons, we haven't been able to acquire the property that would be necessary to build those new parks. It also includes a number of green circles that are not site-specific, that are in the vicinity of, you know, certain development projects. And we, we do, through the development process, encourage, and we are working on amendments to the planning regulations right now, to more than encourage, but actually to require the development of park space in conformance of the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan in conjunction with private development projects. And I will note that Sherwin-Williams included one such park. The Marketplace Project included the expansion of Christie Park, which was one such green circle. And the 5801 Christie Mixed Juice Project, which is now proposed, would also be, is proposed to include a half-acre park, which is one of the green circles on the general plan map coming from the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. So there are some opportunities, but it's kind of slim pickings for the city to try to find new property for us to acquire to build new parks on.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I remember when Commissioner Gesoni and I were both on the Parks and Rec Committee before the planning commission, and we had many conversations about updating the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan. So if that needs allocation in the CIP, then I think it would be a good one to consider. Okay, Commissioner Hemmey, go ahead.
Yes, so Chair, Chair Chafe, I'm glad you asked about the equity issue. I noticed that as well. I would encourage this to be defined in terms of social equity. And I think in particular, the southern part of Emeryville is poorly served. I think we can see from the draft transportation and plan, and I'm sure in the parks area as well. Well, in almost every way, I would guess, it's green space, services, transportation, et cetera. And so I would hope that such an equity value would prioritize improvements in the area of Emeryville that has been not as well improved as the northern part.
Thank you, Commissioner Hemmey. And I just realized I was also guilty of this, but we're in clarifying questions now, so if we can remember to keep it to questions. Then we'll go through public comments and then have time for any comments that, or suggestions that we have as well.
Sure.
No, no problem. So any other questions from commissioners at this point? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I will add, under the HCD, high opportunity, high resource areas maps, that the southern part of the city is shown to be a low resource area. And so that is the way that we define equity, that section of Emeryville would, would be receiving some priority under that value.
Okay. Great, well, let's go ahead and move to the public comment section for this agenda. Charlie, could you please read the script?
Sorry, I was muted there. This is the time for public comments on this item. Anyone wishing to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine on your phone. And I will now check to see if I have received any online speaker cards. I have not. I do see one raised hand among the attendees, and it is Fran Quatell. So let me have her unmute.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. This is an item near and dear to my heart for two reasons. One is that we have an escalating item in our condominium budget to replace the sewer laterals. And it's many millions of dollars. And I'm particularly concerned about replacing, for two reasons. One is I'm particularly concerned about replacing the sewer laterals. If a project comes along and then destabilizes or damages the sewer laterals that we've replaced. So that's one thing, as you consider projects as you have on anchor drive, that's one thing that concerns me. The second thing that concerns me is, is there any funding in the budget that's being discussed to help replace the sewer laterals? So those, that's two, two things about sewer laterals. The second item I want to mention happens to be on Powell Street, which has a large flooding area, especially during the last rains. And I am wondering if there is a budget set aside to repair that area on Powell Street that consistently floods. That would be very helpful.
Great, thank you, Fran, for that comment. Josie, did you want to respond to either of those points? You don't need to, but, actually, sorry, I think we should, should we close the public comment period first, Charlie, and then have a response?
Yes, let me just double check. I don't see any further raised hands. And check my email one last time, no online speaker cards. So yes, it would be appropriate to close public comment at this time.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment at 7:32. And then Josie, if you want to respond to either of those, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. I'll quickly share that the Powell Street issue is on our radar and will be a component of a project in the new CIP. Sewer laterals, I am assuming that you were talking about private sewer laterals. So property owners are responsible for their own sewer laterals. The sewer lateral work that the city undergoes is the ones that we are responsible at our properties from our buildings. So we, if we do have money in the CIP for sewer laterals, it is just for those city facilities and buildings, but not to address private sewer lateral.
Great, thank you. Okay, so now we'll move to the commissioner comments and feedback portion. And actually, I'm going to sneak in a question here to start us off, which is that I know you're talking to a lot of other committees right now. And I was wondering if there are any projects you've heard from the committees that you wanted to highlight that have been brought up to you, any that stood out?
I apologize, I was looking at my list. I will say that this is the first time that the CIP has done any outreach beyond city staff. And so we are new to this input process for the CIP. I hope the next time we do it, we're able to receive more input. That being said, you know, talking to committees and speaking with constituents who are involved in community advisory boards, we have been able to get some input and feedback. The Public Arts Commission has given us a robust list of projects that they would like to be prioritized in the CIP. That includes public art along 40th. So we are actually in the design phase of 40th Street multimodal project, which maybe you have encountered before. But the Public Arts Commission is looking to integrate art into that massive project. They're also looking to do a pilot project for wayfinding signs in Temescall Creek Park. And it was great that I was able to share that with the Parks and Rec Commission, because they were also interested in doing some wayfinding in parks. So I think there could be a nice synthesis there between the two different committees. Parks and Rec folks are very much interested in integrating more nature-inspired play structures into our parks, as well as making sure that we have maintenance funding set aside for capital projects for lighting and other pieces of infrastructure in our parks. We received some input on interest of having a more formal tree planting or tree program to better coordinate dispersing greenery throughout the city, and that that would hopefully be, you know, a priority that would stay in the plan. Let's see if there are anything else high level. I think those are kind of, oh, we did have one comment also about electric vehicle chargers and if the city would be setting a funding aside for more public chargers. So that is a priority that was shared as well.
Great, thank you. All right, would any commissioners like to start by offering comments or feedback? Commissioner Simmons, go ahead.
Thanks so much, Chair Chafe. So I think I just, my general feedback is having just these values described as words is not really enough for me to be able to provide super meaningful feedback. Like, climate action could be like buying everybody a Tesla, or it could be buying everybody, or, you know, making sure we have a bunch of great bike paths. So I think it's the, the presentation's broadest, it's a little too high level, be able to give super meaningful feedback. I'm in favor of all these values, but I'd like to say what they actually mean. So just if this comes back to us in however 10 years, more detail would be helpful. So, thanks so much.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Hemmey, go ahead.
Yep. So sorry to be repeating some of it, but just to be the part, the right part of the record. I would encourage that the equity should be social equity. And that I actually was just looking at the map of Emeryville and realizing it's not only the south edge, it's also the north edge that's underserved. So, and so I would suggest that the, the CIP take into account these sorts of issues and incorporate that into their priorities.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask what you mean by social equity? Are you talking about race, rent burden, households, income?
Yes.
Gender, okay, so all, okay, demographic, who have historically been marginalized. Okay, great, I got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gesoni, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Josie, for your presentation. I like what you put together. I think that the way that you've simplified the number of categories is helpful, because it is high level. And to kind of break it down, break it down so that we see what concepts we're valuing and what things we're trying to prioritize is helpful before we get to where the rubber meets the road. I would like to underscore what Chair Chafe mentioned. I think that our ratio of parks is really way below what it should be, and prioritizing that would be a good thing. I also like transit being on the item, and I think transit is tied in with climate. It's tied in with, it's tied in with equity, and it's tied in with quality of life. And to the extent that we can, I don't have concrete ideas at this point, but I think when we can identify priorities, that will increase the transit friendliness and the human-powered transportation aspect of things that achieves a lot of our goals or pushes us forward on those goals. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dram or Commissioner Wax, any comments or feedback?
I think you did a really good job. Thank you for sharing this document. Again, I think the affordable housing and housing would be a component. I would like to see more details in the future, maybe more emphasis, but this is a really good document. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Wax, anything else that you, or anything you wanted to share?
Oh, yeah, I just want to thank everyone for their work on this and reiterate one of the first comments, which is that, like, I don't feel like there is quite enough detail here for me to give meaningful feedback. And like, there are a number of things that I could consider, like, going down a rabbit hole on, but it's not entirely clear that this is the juncture or that we have enough in front of us. But, but I do appreciate the presentation. I do hope another one of these in the future, you know, again, does have more detail for us to work with, but all the same, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll just- And then I'll just add my comments. Yeah, again, thanks to to Josie. Thank you for putting together this presentation. I think one of the things that I always struggled with coming from the Parks and Rec Committee is that when we got an idea partway through the CIP cycle, we had to kind of struggle to look for opportunities to build out that idea and fund it, given what had already been allocated. And so one thing that comes to mind is that there's been a real interest in like pocket parks, small parks, parks in tiny bits of land that maybe the city already has access to and or is able to get access to, rather than these big blocks like the northern extension of Doyle Hollis, for example. And so if there's any way to build in funding to foresee those opportunities and keep that money aside for things that are likely to come up, it would be amazing. I think that would really give some flexibility in in building on some of that space in the future. And kind of the same perspective, but from a sustainable transportation side as well. I don't know exactly how this works in the process, but I think we've had some really amazing opportunities over the past couple of years through staff creativity to build out some very impactful, sustainable transportation interventions in the city. And some of that came through grant funding, and I think probably some from CIP. If there's any others to keep in mind that, you know, maybe pretty small, but there's a way to allocate that money in the CIP budget to, you know, to take advantage of that in a couple of years. I think it would be really amazing. So I'll stop there and turn it back over to Commissioner Hemmi.
Yes, my question is, what will be the interaction with the Planning Commission on this CIP? How will it happen, when, et cetera?
Oh, I can chime in on that. I think this is the opportunity for the commission to weigh in on the CIP. By state law, the Planning Commission does have to make a determination that CIP is consistent with the general plan before the city council can adopt it. So after the CIP is fleshed out with all of the projects and everything, it will have to come back to you for a review to make sure it's consistent with the general plan. And you'll have to, I think, pass a resolution to that effect before the city council can can then go ahead and adopt it. But by that time, the CIP will be pretty much fleshed out. So I don't believe there's another meeting scheduled between now and that meeting. Is that correct, Josie?
That's correct.
When is that meeting scheduled for the CIP, for the Planning Commission's general plan conformity finding?
Loosely right now for the May meeting.
Right, okay.
So I guess what that means then is are we are basically private citizens engaging in the community outreach meetings? Were we to wish, were we wanting to address priorities, et cetera?
I guess that would be the case. Unless you want to try to squeeze in another study session with the commission. I'm not sure if there's time for that.
Josie, go ahead if there was something else you wanted to add.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say the the priority survey that will be going out in the next month or month and a half would be the time to share priorities on the draft list of projects.
Okay, great.
And we'll we'll be certain to go ahead and forward to the commissioners, you know, all the links and information that the public sees about the input process. Make sure that you can chime in, you know, whenever it's appropriate without having to necessarily wait for a planning commission meeting.
Also, also that the the prior CIP is a great resource, so those eighty-five projects that came to ninety-one million dollars. Those are will basically carry over to the next project. There may be some that have fallen off as a priority, or there were a few that were outside of the limits of Emeryville, like looking at a Greenway extension into along Mandela Parkway in Oakland, and that may not make it over to the next one, because it is outside of our boundaries. But for the most part, those projects will be carried over. And then really this time is to hear input on any additional things that may not have been in the prior one or changes to projects that were in the prior one that maybe we want to now emphasize, you know, this aspect of one of the prior projects.
One more question for me for now. Where do bio swells fit into this? Is that under like storm drains and essential infrastructure?
Yes, that is where those fall. And at first I was going to put those in urban greening, and then after talking with our sustainability staff, understanding that their purpose is more related to to storm water and that they do provide an urban greening benefit, but that their function is would probably be better housed under essential infrastructure.
Okay, I was very impressed by the performance of the ones that I saw in the last storms. So it would be great to see more of those from my perspective. All right, any other comments or feedback at this point on the CIP? Seeing none, I'll ask Josie, do you have what you need from us? Any other questions for the commission?
Yes, I have. I have everything. Thank you so much for your time. Again, this is a new way of of doing this, so look forward to your input on the process as well, moving forward the next time we do this. If there are other ways to structure outreach, I am welcome welcoming of that feedback. And I will be back in May to share more and and provide more definition and and more detail. Hopefully, that is is satisfying of the plan.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we will close out that item and move on to item number ten, Planning Commissioner comments. Does anyone have a comment that they would like to make at this point? Seeing none. We can adjourn at seven forty-eight PM. Most of you will gather on Zoom in February. I'm sorry I will miss it. And then we shall see each other in person in March.
So much.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.